Call order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Perth Amboy Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on the bulletin board in the administrative headquarters building, mailing notices to the home tribune, El Diario La Prensa, Arcy Kirk, as well as all other persons requiring notification pursuant to the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law.
Roll call, Mr. LaBrice?
Mr. Anderson.
Present remotely and hopefully in person later.
Ms. Crawford.
Present.
Mr. George.
Here.
Mr. Marte.
Present.
Ms. Melendez.
Present.
Ms. Oduyella.
Present.
Mr. Keles. Vice President Gonzalez.
Present.
President Peralta.
Present.
We have a quorum.
And now with our student representative, Mr. Angel Cruz.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, administrators, and valued community members, it is my pleasure to be before you once again as the student representative of Perth Amboy High School to share updates and celebrate the incredible accomplishments of our school community over the past month. First, I am thrilled to report that we recently held our much anticipated Fall Pep Rally, a true highlight of the school year. This event brought together the entire student body to celebrate the achievements of our fall sports teams. Athletes were recognized for their dedication and hard work while students showed their Panther pride by repping their respective classes and participating in exciting events. The energy in the gym was electric, and it's safe to say that this was a memorable experience for all who attended. We hope this marks the first of several pep rallies this year as they truly bring our school community together. Another notable event was our homecoming dance, which provided a fun-filled evening for students to celebrate and unwind. The dance was a great success, filled with music, laughter, and joy. I want to express our gratitude to everyone involved in organizing this wonderful event. As we approach key academic deadlines, I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to our teachers and counselors especially, who have been tirelessly assisting seniors with their college applications. The support offered in Room D111 during lunch hours has been invaluable, and their unwavering dedication has not gone unnoticed. On behalf of all seniors, thank you for guiding us through this pivotal process with patience and care. In the realm of sports, our fall sports season has officially concluded, and we're proud of the determination and effort demonstrated by all of our teams. With the winter season just around the corner, excitement is building for what's ahead. The Student Council is already working hard to enhance the experience with a basketball student section, which promises to bring the same Panther spirit and enthusiasm that revolutionized our football games this fall. Additionally, it is wonderful to see that our honor societies, Triumph Music Honor Society, National Honor Society, and Science National Honor Society are all actively meeting and working on their initiatives. These organizations provide students with opportunities to grow academically, creatively, and as leaders, and their efforts are a cornerstone of our school's success. I am also proud to announce that the Student Council, Triumph Honor Society, and other organizations prevalent in our school are working diligently to enhance school spirit and have started to submit their events for the year. In closing, the past month has been filled with celebration, growth, and preparation for the future. Whether it's through athletics, academics, or extracurricular involvement, Perth Amboy High School students continue to shine. Thank you for your continued support, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And now for presentations, Dr. Rwan.
A number of things before we get into the presentation. First, Mr. Cruz, it's always insightful to hear you speak so eloquently as one of our students representing our student body, and I want to thank you for always showing up, not only prepared but as a professional. So, thank you. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge Ms. Crawford and welcome her back to the Board. Mr. George, sir, welcome you back to the Board, looking forward to working with the two of you, and also our newest Board member who will be with us in January, Ms. Eseny Aviles. In addition, I would be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge Mr. Marte Luis, who's here this evening, and what you need to know about this fine gentleman and Board member is that he was away watching this nation and keeping us safe so that democracy can succeed. So, thank you, sir, for your service to this country, for being here this evening. You've been missed, but we know that you've been at every single meeting remotely, especially doing that from far away overseas is something that I think needed to be stated. Two more issues, two more statements that I would like to make before we get into the presentations is Stacy Peralta. Stacy Peralta is, as you know, our Board President, but she's more than that. It takes a lot of work to do the, a lot of effort to do the work that this fine individual puts forward every day, the amount of hours, the amount of time, the elegance, the dignity, the compassion, and they also have to stand up to this onslaught of inaccuracies that try to depict the character of who you are, yet you hold strong to who you are and demonstrated that at the poll with an overwhelming win as you become the next council member for this town. I think it speaks volumes of people recognizing the truth from the myth. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed. This district is better because of you. This evening, on behalf of the Board of Education and this district, we'd like to say to you in recognition and appreciation of your dedication and contributions, in support of the students and the staff of the Perth Amboy School District, from January 2021 to December 2024, given this 21st day of November 2024, Stacy Peralta, gracias por todo.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Peralta, I'm sure we'll say some things later, unless you'd like to say something now as I move on to the presentations, it's your call.
I'll say something later. Thank you so much, though.
Wow, the dignity that you have, the character you have, unbelievable, great leader. So, some great news that we're going to be sharing with all of you, parents in the community, that before we hear from our beautiful students is the following. We have some great news, and the first presentation we wanted to share with everyone was the following. Main highlights, U.S. News World Ranking Regarding Perth Amboy Public School District. DLS scored among the top 40 percentile, 40%, excuse me, New Jersey Elementary and Middle Schools in New Jersey. Student performance data also puts DLS, Dual Language School, as the top performing school in the district. Regarding our high school, the Perth Amboy High School has ranked 257 out of 426 ranked high schools in New Jersey for 2024. Perth Amboy High School, this high school, has gone up 47 spaces in the state rankings since 2020. Perth, there you go. Perth Amboy High School also scored higher, higher, in the rankings than all neighboring high schools around, surrounding this community. Dedication and work of all of our staff, dedication and work of our Board members, clearly our students and their talents demonstrate the integrity of this school district and the work that's done, also with the character of individuals like Mr. Cruz, Angel, who just spoke a few moments ago. Mr., excuse me, Dr. Medina, we're going to do that piece now, or, yes, okay, so we're just going to have a presentation on this U.S. News World Report and something that we want to celebrate.
Now, just, we have a short presentation, and we're going to invite Ms. Cruz Arjamel and Ms. Jamie Richardson, Directors of the CNI Department, to briefly present and tell us a little bit more about the U.S. World Ranking.
It's okay. You know what, can you give me a moment before we do the presentation, because we have, our students who are representing this ranking will be up here in a few moments, but I'm going to ask our Board to go down so they could take a look at this presentation about the U.S. News and World Ranking, and then stay there for our students' presentations so that we could have everyone take a look at this event. And when you listen to our students later, they're the ones who've done the ranking for this school, they're the stars of this district. So, let's start the presentation with the Board members come there, we'll do this, and then we'll have our students come up, okay?
Perth Amboy Public Schools, U.S. News and World Reporting Rankings. The Perth Amboy Public School District's Dual Language School placed among the top 40% of elementary and middle schools in the state of New Jersey, making it both a U.S. News Best Elementary School and a Best Middle School. At Dual Language School, 24% of students scored at or above the proficient level for math, and 60% scored at or above that level for reading. According to U.S. News and World Report, grade elementary and middle schools educate their students from all socioeconomic backgrounds with the goal of setting them up for success. In turn, students develop the core competencies in state curricula that best prepare them for high school. The U.S. News Report Rankings. The highest-ranked U.S. Public Schools in U.S. News and World Reports 2025. Best Elementary and Middle Schools Rankings are those whose students demonstrated outstanding outcomes above expectations in Math and Reading Language Arts State Assessments. Data for Elementary and Middle School Rankings based on the 2021-2022 and 2022-2023 school years. Our New Jersey Elementary and Middle School Rankings 2025. 1,351 New Jersey Elementary Schools made the rankings in the state. Dual Language School ranked 518 in New Jersey Elementary Schools out of the 1,351. Schools that were not included did not have 3rd through 5th grade. 713 New Jersey Middle Schools made the rankings in the state. Dual Language School ranked 187 in the New Jersey Middle Schools out of 713. U.S. News Best Schools Methodology. Elementary and Middle School Ranking Indicators. The elementary and middle school rankings are based almost exclusively on state assessments. Student-teacher ratios are applied to break ties in the overall scores. Mathematics and Reading Proficiency, 50%. The mathematics and reading proficiency indicators are separate measurements of students' abilities, weighted 25% for each subject, that equal the percentage of each student's test takers who were at least proficient in the two subject areas. Mathematics and Reading Performance, 50%. These indicators evaluate mathematics and reading results on state assessments and were weighted 25% for each subject.
There's a different ranking system for the U.S. News Report Rankings for high schools. A great high school educates all of its students from different social and economic backgrounds, exposing them to challenging coursework on the path to graduation. The highest-ranked U.S. Public Schools in U.S. News and World Reports 2024 Best High School Rankings are those whose students demonstrated outstanding outcomes above expectations in Math, Reading, and Science State Assessments, earned qualifying scores on an array of college-level exams, and graduated in high proportions. The data for high school rankings is based on the 21-22 school year. This is the methodology for U.S. News Best High Schools. College readiness is 30%. This is the proportions of 12th graders who took and earned a qualifying score on at least one AP or IB exam. Earning a qualifying score is worth three times more than just taking it. State Assessment Proficiency is 20%. Aggregated scores on state assessments that students may be required to pass for graduation. State Assessment Performance is 20%. How aggregated scores on state assessments compare with U.S. News expectations, given the proportions of students who are Black, Hispanic, and from low-income households. In addition, underserved student performance is 10%. This is scores on state assessments aggregated just among students who are Black, Hispanic, and from low-income households. These scores are compared with what is typical in the state for non-underdeserved students, with parity or higher being the goal. College Curriculum Breadth is 10%. This is the proportions of 12th graders who took and earned qualifying scores on AP and IB exams in multiple areas. More exams are valued more than fewer exams, up to a maximum of four. Earning a qualifying score on an exam is worth three times more than taking it. And the graduation rate is 10%. This is the proportion of entering 9th graders who graduated four academic years later. The U.S. News and World Report Rankings for 2024. Perth Amboy High School is ranked 257 out of 426 high schools that were ranked in New Jersey. Perth Amboy High School went up 47 spaces in the rankings since 2020. Nationally, Perth Amboy High School was ranked 7,796 out of nearly 18,000 schools in the United States. In addition, Perth Amboy High School went up 1,875 spaces in the national rankings since 2020, and Perth Amboy High School ranked higher than some neighboring high schools in Middlesex County near us.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to present the Perth Amboy High School Vocal Ensembles and Band. My name is Dr. Pepe. I'm a district director, and I have my friends here.
Good evening. My name is Brian Wilson, Supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts.
In our arts programs, we are in it to win it.
So, the Perth Amboy High School Marching Panthers placed 3rd in a statewide marching band competition on October 26th. This has been the first competitive trophy in over 10 years.
So, the performance groups that you are going to be seeing this evening, we have placed the slides in the order that our students will be performing. So, all of the vocal ensembles are under the direction of Mr. Jeffrey Pando.
So, first, we have our chorale. They comprise of students in grades 10 to 12 enrolled in the concert choir classes. Students, typically first and second-year members, sing a variety of styles in different languages.
Then our show choir, choir, the students audition for this co-curricular ensemble, and we have students who are interested in contemporary pop and jazz music.
Next, we have our specific jazz ensemble. This is an additioned co-curricular group comprising of students that are interested in jazz music. Students collaborate on various group and solo arrangements.
And we have our band ensembles under the direction of Mr. Brian Plaguey. We have our concert band, but tonight it is the Wind Ensemble Advanced Band that is going to be performing for you.
And lastly, for our vocal ensembles, we have the Gospel Choir, which is also an auditioned ensemble comprising mostly of students that are interested in African-American spirituals and gospel styles of music.
And one of the items that is on the agenda this evening for proposed approval by the Board of Education is the Advanced Choir going to Montclair State in the spring, where they have been invited to participate in a residency with a professional composer and conductor. And our students received many accolades at the state and regional level.
So, this evening, you'll be seeing the front of the stage, the performance side of Performing Arts, but however, over the years, we've built a dedicated backstage crew, empowering students with leadership roles and various behind-the-scenes responsibilities, such as stage management, sound, lighting. These students bring our productions to life, running the show. They transform the story from the page to the stage, creating the perfect atmosphere with carefully created lighting and expert sound mixing.
Connect with us on social media, and please come see us at our upcoming winter concerts. The choir is the 13th of December, and the band is December 19th. And now, time for our performers.
So, good evening. Our first selection, this is the chorale, so this is three classes put together, plus our honors class as well, and this will feature our New Jersey State, New Jersey All-State Sopranos, Arlene Valdez, and our New Jersey Jazz All-State soloist, oh my God, I'm a little nervous, Alina Valdez. Please give them a round of applause. Our first selection is a South African piece called "Donna Lo Fasa," and it's a blessing to this wonderful auditorium and to all of you, so welcome. They don't teach you how to play drums, I'm almost. All right, so as we're just shifting a little bit of pace, our next selection is from our advanced group, called Anyus Day. It's actually a composition by Merky composer Samuel Barker, and the original song, wow, I'm blanking right now as to what the original song's name was. Oh, Adagio per Street. It was composed in 1937 with words and lyrics added in 1967, which kind of describes the passion, love, but mournful type of music. What can we enjoy in Anyus Day by the Advanced Corps? This also features a grief solo from our all-state, also another New Jersey All-State-recognized soloist, Ms. Karli Marfivera. soloist, Miss Carli Marfivera. Okay, so the next group, so there's a lot more to that piece, so we're still kind of working on it. Okay, so our next group is our Show Choir, and you can see that a variety of different students that are taking the curricular activities are also part of the after-school groups as well. So the Show Choir, winning a bunch of competitions over the last eight years, getting first place and superior awards, being invited. We perform a lot of the popular contemporary styles of music, even theater as well. This song is called "Save the World," and we're only going to play it a second. Okay? Cool. Thank you.
Who's gonna save the world tonight? Who's gonna bring you back to life? We're gonna make it new and I, we're gonna save the world tonight. There was a time...
I know, it was kind of a very awkward spot to stop right before the downbeat, right before the beat drop, sorry. You gotta come to the concert, that way. So, this is our jazz vocal ensemble, that we call ourselves the Red Fusion Jazz Ensemble, mainly because we use a very instrumental student to be part of the instrumental side of this. So, this group started voluntarily, because my degree is in jazz music from my community college, so I have this aptitude for jazz as well, so I figured I'd share that love with them as well, and it's been a rock. So, this is, from the start, one of the more familiar jazz songs from now. It's a new jazz ensemble. And I forgot to mention that it features our very own Chantal Estebas, the two soloists. We do have one more, but I... It's now my fellow friend and colleague, Isabel. Thank you. We'll be back.
Good evening. As Dr. Pepe and Mr. Olsen have said, my name is Brian Plagie, I'm the band director here at the high school. On stage before you is the Wind Ensemble, which is our advanced ensemble. It's the top-tier performing ensemble in the band world in this people. You'll notice there's a bit of a mix-and-match-up here because I do share students with Mr. Panda, we do share very talented individuals in different situations, and I'm happy to share because sharing is caring. Yeah, thanks, Jose. We are going to play for you tonight a piece called "The Radeski March," which is the closing number for our winter concert every year, if you'd like to hear that and more. Our concert is December 19th at 6:00 p.m. Every single instrumental music student will be featured in that concert from freshman through 12th grade. So this is the Wind Ensemble performing "Radeski March."
We're enjoying what we're doing, man. It's a hurry-up, like, top-level stuff going on right here. Another round of applause from my guys. So, a couple of, guess, a few statistics here. Yeah, sopranos and altos and timbales. So, this is our Gospel Choir, comprised of approximately, this year, 80 students at the school, staying with me for two hours and dedicating their time for love of music. So, and this year, we've been invited to sing at the NJ Music State Convention in February, so hopefully that'll make it on the board meeting in February. But we're hoping that we get to go. Yes, thank you, yeah, it's a big thing. That goes out for Band Boy, it's a beacon when it comes to music as well, not just our statistics, how we graciously showed us, but also in the arts as well. So, again, thank you for your patience. We have a lot of students that come after school. And I guess my closing remarks, thanks to Dr. Ramon for always supporting me, thank you to the rest of the administration, thank you to yourselves as well, Board of Education, I really feel good without you guys. So, we hope that you continue to support our endeavors. Like I said before, we are now a beacon ourselves, and without your support, we can't get there as well. We also, if, as a personal invite to all of you, we hope to see you at our winter concert Friday, December 13th, at 6:00 p.m. And those that know me, I actually start at 6:00 p.m. So, hopefully get there on time, grab a good seats, because it is our first major concert in this beautiful auditorium, so thank you so much. And lastly, from the bottom of my heart, and extended help that we need as well as the beautiful musicians and talented musicians that we have, that are recognized at both the division level, central New Jersey and state level, we ask you that to continue to support us, but not just at the high school, but at our middle schools and elementary schools, because without those teachers and having choir every single day throughout the entire year, none of this is possible. So, if you love what you hear tonight, and hopefully you guys get to come to our winter concert, we plead to you that music is important to all of us, to everyone on stage, and again, we can't do it without our teachers at the middle school and elementary school. This is the Gospel Choir singing "Spiritual" for you guys. Enjoy.
While the screen's coming down, I'll make mention of two additional presentations, so that I will not have to interrupt the flow of the next two presentations. The first presentation will be done by Ms. Katie Devault, our Director of School Counseling and Related Services. She'll be speaking about K-12 Social Emotional Wellness for All Students and Peer Mediation and Conflict Resolution. I'd like to call out the Board of Education on this, because this is one of the initiatives that they wanted to see since last year. As we all, you know, Mr. George, thank you, sir, you have been an advocate for this as well, continuing to follow up with this conversation. I think you'd be very pleasantly surprised to see all the things that the Board wished to see in place coming to fruition. The second presentation would be a CUSAC District Improvement Plan DIP, interim placement scores, by our talented Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jamie Richardson. But first and foremost, Ms. Devault.
Thank you, Dr. Amon. Good evening. Thank you again to the Board of Education for all your support and central administration in what I have the opportunity and privilege to share with you. This is representation of the hard work of not only our school counselors, our non-traditional school psychologists, our student assisting counselors, but honestly, the student leaders that have arose from these programs. We have students stepping up in our high school, our middle school, and our elementary school. You should see these fourth and fifth graders being trained on the important life skills and truly serving the students inside their school communities thanks to these programs. So, this is peer mediation by the numbers. I'm happy to report that after being in our third month of the school year, we did some pre-training with our mediators from last year into this year, and over the last six weeks of peer mediations running effectively in all the buildings, we have an average of 11 to 12 peer mediators and growing in at least all of our buildings. There are approximately one to two mediations happening per day as per the building's reporting this past week in the survey. Approximate number of peer mediations per week is averaging one to five. In some cases, you'll see even more were reported. And we have a 100% success rate as per the counselors that are supporting and overseeing the students and the student feedback on these mediations. So, you'll see here from our graph, Peer Mediation Feedback in Progress, that when the five choices were provided, to strongly agree, agree, somewhat agree, disagree, and strongly disagree, these past three statements, all counselors reported either agreeing or strongly agreeing when working with students on peer mediations. So, peer mediators are learning through the process of helping others, students leave mediations with their conflict resolved and feeling better, students having their conflicts resolved through peer mediations are learning life skills and growing both socially and emotionally as individuals. So, I understand the font is tiny, I just wanted to show some of the added-in information that we received from these, this survey. So, what the counselors are saying, students are excited, eager to take on these leadership positions, peer mediators have shown increased confidence and excitement about being leaders in their school community, counselors reported that it's great to hear our peer mediators speak about assisting younger students, the skills that they are utilizing and reflected throughout their daily lives as well. Counselors also reported that students seem to really be taking the advice and social skills of their peer mediators. So this is just some of the feedback that I wanted to share, but I thought what would be an even better treat is hearing it directly from the students themselves.
Peer mediators throughout the district work closely with the school counselors and building administrators to support student needs, seeking resolutions to conflict. Peer mediators at Perth Amboy High School recently met with counselors, deans of students, and vice principals. The entire group introduced themselves and shared reasons why peer mediation is important to them.
Hey, my name's Ricardo Castillo, and I chose to be a peer mediator because I want to be the big brother to a little sibling that I never had. And I feel like this program really allows me to help out other people, which I find joy in. I find, I love helping out other people, because just seeing the smile on their face... I love helping out other people because just seeing the smile on their face, and I learn from them too. So it's a learning experience.
Hi, my name is Elvian Elise Jorge. I am a peer mediator. I am in 12th grade. And why I chose to be a peer mediator was because of the community. I wanted to help my community as best as possible, and this was the perfect chance I got to help them. I became like a listening ear, and I am helping the people around me and showing them how much I love them.
My name's Yuri. I'm a senior at Perth Amboy High here. And I'm excited to be a peer mediator just because it's fulfilling to help people. And I know from experience how important it is to have a support group or someone to talk to. And especially that someone being a peer, I know how important that is. So I want to be there for someone who might not have anyone there.
Hi, my name is Di Maria Morales. I'm a senior at Perth Amboy High School. And the reason why I enjoy being a part of peer mediating so much is because I enjoy being able to help others, and it really brings a warm and fulfilling feeling to see others being uplifted. As someone who wants to go into the field of music therapy and psychology, I think that this not only brings me a great amount of skill set, but it also opens new doors and opportunities for me. So I'm really grateful and excited to be a part of this.
Really excited about our peer mediation program, which is here, it's alive. It's going to help our students be successful and build relationships. This is near and dear to my heart. I remember being in middle school as a seventh and eighth grader and being a peer mediator myself and able to help my peers solve their problems and come up with solutions that is just best for everyone. And the fact that it's here at Perth Amboy High School is absolutely amazing.
This is a reenactment of peer mediation among students at Perth Amboy High School. The pause room at Perth Amboy High School utilizes both doors to allow students in conflict to enter one at a time from opposite sides of the space. All mediations involve two peer mediators to lead the resolution and maintain ground rules for all. All right, thank you. So that room that was featured is our pause room, which is of course symbolic for many reasons. We, of course, in Perth Amboy, we're the Panthers, and we love paw prints and paws. But when you're in conflict, you also need to pause, take a deep breath, think back to the skill set that our students are learning in this program. But PAWS also stands for Peer Allies for Wellness and Solution. And that truly embodies the student-focused, student-centered leadership that's coming from this program. So we're fortunate to continue to utilize that room for our conflict resolutions. And that video really showed the partnership that has evolved in our buildings with administration and the peer mediators because we're able to utilize this program to create solutions and of course, the skill sets that are coming from that. So I can't help, I just enjoyed this program so much. The amount of administrators and staff in the building, I'm going to add this, myself included, that were peer mediators growing up, that we all kind of were able to reflect on when meeting with the students. It was just really enjoyable for everyone involved. So this program continues to just lighten up our buildings and our district. And we are so grateful, and I'm excited to continue to report out its successes. And thank you. I'm going to switch gears to the next topic. So but thank you so much. And thank you to our peer mediators and all of our building principals and staff that are helping this program be so strong. So my next topic is age-appropriate screeners that we're able to bring the district. During the 24-25 school year, every single child grades kindergarten to 12th grade will be educated on age-appropriate wellness curriculum and screened by the student support team members in their building. So this initiative is very important because it's reaching every student and all students. And as a counseling department, we want to ensure that we're constantly making those connections and doing just that. So starting off is our SEL screener, which is utilized for students grades K through 5. The Social Skills Improvement System is a culturally responsive, valid, research-based measure. It is highly consistent with the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, CASL, also known as, as well as Social Emotional Learning, SEL, competency framework as it measures the five areas of SEL competence: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. And additionally, it provides data that's utilized within our district's multi-tiered systems of support. The SOS screener, reaching students grades 6 through 12, is an evidence-based program that teaches students how to identify signs of depression and self-harm in themselves and peers. SOS has been utilized in thousands of middle schools and high schools around the country for decades. Research shows improvement in students' knowledge and adaptive attitudes, depression, and self-harm, as well as a 64% reduction in self-reported suicide attempts following the program in school districts. So after delivering SOS to students, schools reported 97% improvement, believe students learned to identify signs of depression and suicide. 90% saw an increase in students seeking help for themselves or friends. And 95% felt there was a reduced behavioral health stigma among students. So competence and goals with this program. Classroom lessons with group discussion is how this will be utilized. So our school counselors will be delivering this. It's our staff that knows our students. They're going to be working with small groups, truly connecting and teaching the important life skills. The screener consists of three videos and a seven-question survey. The videos serve as a conversation starter for discussion and to provide student support. Students then complete an exit ticket, allowing them the opportunity to speak with a member of the team regarding themselves or a peer or someone they're concerned about. So again, this is something that all students have the opportunity to complete to ensure that continued one-on-one connection with their counselors. The goals of this program is of course to decrease suicide and suicide attempts by increasing student knowledge and adaptive attitudes about depression. Encourage personal help-seeking and/or help-seeking on behalf of a friend, so the life skill of advocacy for yourself or others. Encourage personal help-seeking, I'm sorry, reduce the stigma of mental health concerns, and acknowledge the importance of seeking help. So this program uses the acronym ACT, Acknowledge, Care, and Tell. And it also included curriculum for staff that was provided through professional development this month. But what I thought would be special for tonight was the program has actually parent resources as well that our counselors will be utilizing with the parents throughout the community. So for tonight, I was going to go over ACT from the parent guides and speak. Sometimes we utilize it when talking to teachers, parents. So how to help your child save a life. Our school uses SOS Signs of Suicide, a national prevention program that educates students about warning signs for suicide and encourages them to act. Acknowledge, care, and tell a trusted adult. Whether they have concerns about themselves or a friend, how would you respond to your child if they told you a friend might be thinking of hurting themselves, depression, any form of harm? So check in with your child. A, acknowledge any concerns they have about the way a friend is talking or acting. C, care. Show them how much you care by listening and taking their concerns seriously. T, tell. Reach out to their friend's parents or contact the school for support. Never keep a secret when concerned about the safety of a child. So we just, from the school counseling department, we are constantly here for our students, not just the students, but the parents and community as well. Here are some helpful resources, and thank you so much for all your time this evening. Thank you.
Today I will be presenting on the Quality Single Accountability Continuum results, or CUSAC results. What is CUSAC? The New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, NJCUSAC, is the Department of Education's monitoring and self-evaluation system for public school districts. The system focuses on monitoring and evaluating school districts in five key components that, based on research, have been identified critical and effective school districts. These components are instruction and program, fiscal, governance, operations, and personnel. Pursuant to the requirements of NJAC 6A30, the Perth Amboy School District has undergone the Quality Single Accountability Continuum District Performance Review, or DPR, for all performance evaluation areas in May 2023. The interim placement scores are in the table below. Instruction and programs at 73%, fiscal management 88%, governance 94%, operations 92%, and personnel 97%. Because the area of instruction and program did not meet the cutoff score of 80%, a district improvement plan was developed and was presented at the August 2023 Board of Education meeting. We continue to implement the plan by providing targeted intervention supports to students for all of the instruction and program integrators. Thank you.
Madam President, this concludes our presentations.
Thank you for that. And now moving to our meeting for open to the public for discussion of agenda items and non-agenda items. There will be only one public participation session at this meeting. At this time, comments are invited on any matter. Public participation shall be governed by Policy Number 0167. Anyone wishing to address the board, please state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No member of the public may address or question board members individually. Although the board encourages public participation, it reserves the right through its presiding officer to terminate remarks to and/or by any individual not keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. The board discourages the public from speaking negatively about any employee, administrator, or student. Individuals can be held personally liable for defamatory or libelious statements made at public meetings. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by members of the public. Comments regarding employees, administrators, or students cannot be legally responded to by any member of the board or administration.
Good evening. Pat Paradiso, President of the Perth Amboy Federation. I don't know how a district can lay off 45 staff members without explaining to the community how it found itself in the position to warrant such drastic measures. It doesn't make sense. I don't understand how a district can cut busing in a city with dangerous routes to schools and not explain to the community how it found itself in the position to warrant such a drastic measure. It doesn't make sense. I don't understand how a district can cut programs that our students love without explaining it to the community how it found itself in the position to warrant such drastic measures. It doesn't make sense. Everyone knows we didn't lose funding. In fact, we received more funding this year than last year, so none of this makes sense. We've heard that the superintendent is blaming the dire financial straits he finds himself in on the lack of increase in school taxes. We should all be shown the math on that because it doesn't make sense. We have classes going on without certified teachers. We have a lack of supplies. We have no intervention teachers, reading specialists, or math specialists. Students are not getting the services they are entitled to. It doesn't make sense. When is this board going to hire a forensic auditor, unconnected to this superintendent, his BA, and his attorney, to help us make sense of all of this? We need to know what happened to all the funding that was intended for staff, busing, supplies, and programs for our students. There has been no reasonable explanation for how fast and how far this district has fallen. The cuts are continuing to happen like a slow-motion train wreck, and the superintendent thinks no one is watching, but everyone is watching. The community deserves to find out the truth. Thank you.
Josiah Santa Maria, District Representative for the Perth Amboy Federation. Let me begin by recognizing the amazing performances from tonight. The hard work and the determination of the students and staff was quite evident in those performances. I'm here tonight to discuss the drastic cuts to the after-school programs that the district has offered in the past and is now currently offering. And I apologize if these numbers are not entirely accurate, but I had to dig through several board agendas. And this year, there were clubs on the September, October, and some of those clubs on the October meeting were then again on the November meeting. So after combing through past board agendas, I compared the last three years to see what our students have lost. In the 2022-23 school year, the high school offered over 30 clubs to the students. These are great opportunities for our students to get involved in their school community, and the value of these programs cannot be overstated. From what I can tell, for the 24-25, the amount of opportunities have been cut in half. The middle school, there were roughly about 10 clubs in the 2022-23 school year. This year, it seems there's only a handful of clubs for the students to participate in. This doesn't even include some of the sports teams that have had their spring season erased, gone. If we are truly here for the students, which I imagine is the reason why we are all here, this cannot stand. Many of our students come to school every day with the anticipation of attending a club or going to practice after dismissal. If we continue to cut these extracurricular activities, I don't know how you can encourage these students to participate in their school community when you have dismantled so many of the things that they enjoy. As the superintendent told the cheerleaders that this district is millions of dollars in the hole, there must and should be other options so that our students are not the ones that are suffering. The community has elected you to do what's in the best interest for their children. You can't tell me that cutting these programs is in anyone's best interest. Thank you.
Good evening. I am here acting independently of any clubs, sports, or activities that I am a part of, but I represent the sentiment of the student body. When welcomed into this august institution, we were promised that it would be, as stated on the district newsletter, where the roots will be strong, the foundation will have love, and inspiration will follow. However, we have found this incredibly difficult to observe given the current state of clubs, sports, and extracurricular activities here at the Perth Amboy High School due to lack of funding. As a result of lack of funding, many clubs cannot participate in annual competitions and events. These are academic clubs that immerse students in global issues pertaining to various fields, namely STEM and international affairs. Furthermore, they nurture crucial skills such as leadership, critical thinking, and problem-solving, to name a few. Through the competitions and events that these academic clubs provide, we are exposed to the ideas from other students of other schools across the state. These clubs allow for our development as students and the cultivation of our character. In addition, it is not only academic clubs that are being severely impaired, but the athletics department as well. With the looming threat of certain sports being cut out, it leaves students without the opportunity to practice sportsmanship, discipline, teamwork, along with other qualities. Similar to clubs, sports provide students the opportunities needed to become a well-rounded individuals beyond the classroom. However, without the necessary funding, students are deprived of the experiences that these extracurricular activities provide. For instance, annual competitions that clubs have participated in cost anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000. cost anywhere from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. And while fundraising is an option, not only is the process to get them approved incredibly long, but raising those amounts is virtually impossible, given the competition's deadlines. So as a concerned student body, we ask, what alternatives can you provide to ensure that funding is given to these indispensable clubs, sports, and activities? How can we, as students, know that we will be looked after with necessary and properly allocated funds? Please answer these questions. And when you do, we will know that the effort to ensure that the roots are strong, the foundation has love, and inspiration follows. In other words, la promesa is fulfilled. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Muniz. I am a proud alumni of Perth Amboy High School, class of nineteen ninety-nine. I am a very vocal advocate for many social causes, especially in education and especially in Perth Amboy. The corral and the band were absolutely beautiful this evening. Saying that, recently, there have been word of budget cuts to the extracurricular programs on the middle school and high school level. Quick personal background, I was a member of the varsity cheerleading squad as a freshman for about a year. I played softball throughout high school. I was involved in a player, too. I had the absolute honor and pleasure of being a part of the Perth Amboy High School Corral for all four years of high school under the leadership, guidance, and love of Mr. Richard Johnson. The programs and educators, like the corral and Mr. Johnson, provided a safe space for me and my classmates through some of the toughest times as a youngster. It kept many of us out of trouble and gave us an extended family whom we still have today. Just as the corral and chorus created a safe space for us, faculty here have made a school program such as basketball cheerleading, baseball, softball, bowling, golf, and all extracurricular activities on the middle and high school levels a safe space for many students today and are still absolutely necessary for many students today. These programs are especially important for our students to thrive in this ever-changing, ever-growing community. These programs being cut or the threat of being cut in any capacity would be detrimental in our students' lives and would likely have a profound impact and not a positive one. I just ask the board to truly consider the students of this community when looking for ways to trim down your budget. Thank you.
I'm Alexia Rivera. I'm a teacher, coach, and resident of Perth Amboy. Please excuse my voice. I was sick last week. In education, we often begin with why. We ask our students why we're learning certain things and why they're important. Today, I want each of us in this room to reflect on our why. Why did you choose to be in education? Why did you commit to this career? What drives you to do what you do each day? I ask you to consider your why as there has been a decision to cut competition cheer next year, the middle school competition season this year, as well as other sports programs and clubs in our district. Because for so many of our students, these programs are their why. These programs are what motivates them and is the driving factor to maintain strong attendance, maintain good grades for eligibility, and to be a leader for their peers and community. What message are we sending to our students when we take away this part of their lives with little to no warning? The community has not received any notice that certain sports or activity are getting cut other than if they investigate on their own, such as looking at board agendas. Even in doing that, there has not been a clear reason or a reason in general for this decision. Why these programs? Why now? In regards to the competition cheerleading programs, why one of the largest and most successful sports programs in our district? Six months ago, there was an approval of a budget that included these programs. Why are we just learning about these cuts now? Why are we learning about these cuts after teams have been preparing? Whether it's preseason or postseason workouts, students even participating in other sports to stay in shape for their sport, their reason, their why, this raises the question of whether you truly value the students, the staff, and the programs we celebrate in words but disregard in actions. Cutting these programs, especially at the middle school level, affects the feeder programs, these programs that are essential to even the playing field for our students against neighboring districts that they often compete and play against. Research shows that students from marginalized communities face more obstacles in achieving the same outcomes as their peers. By cutting these middle school programs, are we widening that gap rather than closing it? Our students deserve more than just words of appreciation. They deserve consistent support and opportunities to pursue all their passions, especially in a time where they need their why more than ever. So I ask, why make this decision of cutting certain sports and clubs? And what message are you sending to the students and the community we are here to serve? Thank you.
Dr. Pepe, do we have anyone who wishes to speak who is remote?
Good evening. I do have people in the remote. My name is Dr. Pepe. I'm going to be moderating the remote portion of the meeting tonight. If you wish to speak, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Microsoft Teams to raise your hand. Press star five and then follow the system prompt to unmute. There is no one in the remote who wishes to speak. Thank you.
I need a motion to close public comments.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Dr. Roman?
Just to ensure fiscal clarity. Currently, for the extracurricular summary of Perth Amboy Public Schools, we have a fund amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that has been funded. We are over that by one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, meaning that we are spending more for extracurricular activities than is even allocated in the budget, which clearly demonstrates our commitment to extracurricular. When you take a look at athletic summary, we currently have allocated three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, yet we are spending five hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, again, way above the amount of money that has been allocated for both of these extracurricular and athletic summary programs. The question that was asked is, what are we saying to the community? We need your assistance in being able to fund these programs. We need taxes to be increased to fund these programs. In reference to a statement that has been made many different times about the fiscal propriety of this district, there were thirty-eight audit findings done when we arrived here from the state. There is zero, which demonstrates the balance of this budget. So we clearly support these programs. We're overfunding these programs because we believe in them. But the bottom line is that we cannot continue to run programs if we don't have the money to run the programs. The same question will come at the end of the school year when we're asked, what's going on with the budget? We're trying to be fiscally prudent to arrive to that. We will have a deficit at the end of the school year. And I'm saying now, as I said last year. So what is required is for the community to come together and to raise taxes. And we have other things that we are trying, we're going to propose to the board to see what we can do. If we have the funds, we'll run it. Again, we're overspending what we're even allocated to spend on our athletics and extracurricular. So I wanted to give some quantitative, qualitative, empirical data to statements of where we are as opposed to sometimes the myth and misinterpretation of what is being said by some, not all. I do appreciate the comments made by many of our commentaries this evening, but some by others were disingenuous and wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of the public meeting wherein the board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, one through nine. Therefore, it be resolved that in accordance with the provisions of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the provisions of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B. For the purpose of this discussion, the following matters, personnel and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. It is anticipated the length of this executive session will be ninety minutes, and that action may be taken in public after the executive session. I need a motion to enter executive session.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The time is now seven oh five, and we will be entering executive session. I need a motion to close executive session.
Motion to close?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Amendments and revisions to the agenda? Ms. LeBris?
So there was an addendum that was placed out where the agenda was placed this evening. In addition to the addendum, there's a revision to Personnel Item Number Two, Letter A, Katie Mueller revising the location from Willen School to Richardson School, revising the effective date from honor before February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five to eleven eighteen, twenty-twenty-four. Also in addition to Finance, Item Number Three, Letter R, is being added. Fundraiser for William C. McGinnis School, two PTO dances, December twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, and February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Now I need a motion for the approval of minutes of regular meeting held on October seventeenth of twenty-twenty-four, the approval of executive session meetings of meeting held on October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Move it.
Ms. Crawford? I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Approval of the bill list for October seventeenth of twenty-twenty-four for the following payrolls of October fifteenth and October thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four? I need a motion.
Motion to approve the bill list?
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Correspondence from State Department of Education, letters received from the Teachers Pension and Annuity Fund approving the applications for early slash service retirement for the following individuals with the following effective dates, and a letter received from the Public Employees Retirement System approving the application for service slash early retirement for the following individuals listed below. And now for our Board Secretary, Mr. LeBris.
So Report of Bit Opening from October thirty-first, sale of district vehicles specified in attachment, Secretary Monthly Financial Report for the month of September twenty-twenty-four, Treasurer's Monthly Financial Report for the month of September twenty-twenty-four. Opening balance, twenty-five million, two fifty-five, three sixty-three, ninety-seven. Cash receipts of fifty-five million, one fifty-two, seven ninety-three, seventy-three. Cash disbursements of fifty-two million, nine thirty-eight, one ninety-two, eighty-eight, and an ending cash balance of twenty-seven million, four sixty-nine, nine sixty-four, eighty-four. Acceptance of the report of the Secretaries and Treasurers as submitted and is being in agreement for the month of September twenty-twenty-four. Acceptance of certification from the Board Secretary that no major line item has been over-expended for the month of September twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. LeBris. And now for the Board President's Report. My condolences to Mary Guba's niece, Wilson Vasquez's father, Alexander Dixon, brother-in-law, in the administration building in school number seven, Jennifer Steezy, mother-in-law, Siri School, Basilio Perez's brother, Flynn School, Christopher Zapola, grandfather, and Carlos Rosa Junior, uncle. At the Patton School, Carmen Cruz, aunt. Crew Center, Sharon Bear's mother. Erica Rodriguez's grandfather. At Richardson School, Isabella Serrano, mother. Nidia Espinoza, father. Claudia Gonzalez Rodriguez's grandmother. At McGinnis School, Lou Anne Chapman, mother. Zachary Alt's grandmother, Melanie Rosas, Rojas, excuse me, grandmother. At Rose Lopez, Catherine Garabito's father. Noemi Natalie's uncle. At the Freshman Academy, Brian Oliveira's stepfather. And at the high school, Gloria Witherhalp's mother. And so for my last President's Report, the past few weeks have been very different. I have done a lot of reflecting on my time serving here on the Board of Education. And while I've done this reflection, I'm filled with gratitude, a sense of pride in the work that we have accomplished together. It has been an honor to work alongside such dedicated, passionate individuals who share the common goal of enriching our students, educational experiences, and shaping a brighter future for our community. Throughout my tenure, I have learned invaluable lessons about leadership, collaboration, and the incredible resilience of our students, teachers, and administrators. I have gained a deeper appreciation for the complexities of education, balancing budgets, developing policies, ensuring equitable opportunities for all. These lessons have not only shaped my understanding of education but have also strengthened my commitment, my why, to making a positive impact wherever life takes me. While I will deeply miss my time on the board, I carry forward the lessons and experiences I've gained here, and I remain committed to supporting our schools, students, families in any way that I can. I am so proud of what we've accomplished together and so hopeful for what lies ahead for our district. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this journey. Serving on the Board of Education has been one of the most fulfilling chapters of my life, and I will carry these experiences.
Lastly, I would like to say thank you to the administrators here and Dr. Roman. These people work tirelessly, Monday through Sunday. And it is seen. I see what you do. I know we all see it. And I just want to say thank you because the work that you do speaks volumes. And thank you to the administrators, the staff, support staff. Again, everything that you do matters. And I know that sometimes we get caught up in our everyday lives and everything that we have to juggle, and we're all, you know, short-staffed and dealing with so much. But I just genuinely want to say thank you because I know that it's a lot. And then we deal with our personal lives and everything else that comes along with it. And we go to work every day, smiling and, you know, pushing forward. And I just want to genuinely say thank you. Because without you, there would be nothing in this district. So I just want to say thank you again to the support staff, administrators, teachers, and even parents who have to go to work every single day and wake up their children, make sure they get to school. And so collectively, I am confident that this district will continue to move forward. And to conclude, I just wanted to once again congratulate Diane Crawford, Mr. George, and say welcome back to Luis Marte. I'm thrilled that he's back completing our team here. And welcome to Josania Velez, our new board member. I am confident that the people up here will move this district forward, that we will continue to work together, and that these people up here definitely have the district's and the community's best interests at heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And now moving on to our Curriculum Committee Chair, Mr. George. Oh, sorry. See, I get emotional. I just get lost.
It wasn't supposed to be a mic. I'm sorry.
Doctor Roman.
My apologies. I thought my mic was. A number of things. One, we uh I want to thank the board for the conversations that we just had. This is a complicated endeavor and to see the transition, Madam President, under your leadership upstairs, as we look at having those tough conversations to see what we're going to do uh moving forward. I just wish others could see it because it was uh eloquently done. But I want to thank the board for engaging in that conversation, and that's why it takes a long time sometimes for us to come down. To the full board, I mean, past, present, and moving forward, I don't think people realize the amount of work that all of you do. You don't get paid. The sacrifices you make, the the indignity that you must endure at times for for doing nothing but just being ethical and trying to do the right thing. And I applaud you for that, and you should be celebrated for that, and I'll continue to stand with you to do that. I also wanted to take this opportunity to uh thank our leaders because I was just expressing to the board uh how much they're doing with with a lot less resources and know that the board sees it, know that I see it. All leaders, particularly principals and directors, your job is also at times uh not as, I guess, well, well, uh appreciate it, but know you're appreciated by me and us. Um, earlier before, it was, I just want to be clear about something was stated by one of the comments that, you know, um, this district has conducted independent audits, so that you're clear, that are state sanctioned. They're not audits that are done by individuals that are in-house. I want to make sure that's clear. It's not as though the business office is doing an audit on themselves or that we're doing an audit on ourselves. This is a state regulated audit that happens and we have complied with and have surpassed all expectations as it relates to the fiscal endeavors of this district. And we stand behind that, and we're proud of the fact there's no audit findings in this district found by an independent state auditor that's following legislative, statutory, regulatory aspects. Three other things. I'm going to go back to one thing. I had mentioned uh Ms. Peralta before professionally as it relates to the work that she's done for this board. On a personal note, we have spent a lot of time, as I have to spend a lot of time with the President and Vice President um over the number of years because there's so much work that has to get done. I know how busy you are. I know how dedicated you are. I sincerely not only appreciate you, but I admire you. The fact that you're going to go on council just says to me, keep going. Keep going. Phenomenal human being. You are a phenomenal human being, and you have been a great partner. And this board and this district is better because of your leadership and your stewardship. I cannot express that. I don't say things I don't mean, and I mean that one. Someone else I'd like to talk about this evening, if I may. Um, Carmen Southward, Carmen Southward. What could I say about this dynamic individual who's on our agenda to uh retire? Um, people may not know this, but eight years ago Carmen and I met. We didn't know each other. And just like, by the way, just like our 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 uh our meetings that we have, they're not always fun conversations that we have with the administrators, and Carmen and I have had many robust conversations, many. But at the end of the day, we always walked out the room the same way that we've walked out of what we've done with the same mission. This woman was in charge of security. Then she got in charge of transportation. Then she got in charge of food service, and then she did all three of them, and she did it well. She cares about this community. She is an excellent leader. She's ethical. She is appreciative and loyal to the opportunities she's been given. But more importantly, she's appreciative and loyal to this district, to this community. I'm sorry that she's going. I wish that she wasn't. Phenomenal, phenomenal human being and leader, and she's going to be missed, Ms. Southward, Mrs. Southward, Carmen. And I'm glad you're here with your husband. And I want to say thank you for lending us all these years to us and uh uh we're going to miss you, but you're not going to be far. I know the work that you've done, Carmen. People may not know, but the board knows a lot of the things that you found, that you fixed under your watch. So thank you. And last but not least is next week's Thanksgiving. So peace and love to everyone. Break bread, be in harmony, and we'll see you in January. That's my report, Madam President.
Thank you. And now moving to our Curriculum Committee Chairperson, Mr. George.
Yes, Madam President, uh I'd like to move item one on page four to item thirteen on page five.
Second.
Second emotion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to Personnel Committee, Madam Vice President.
Madam President, I'd like to move um item number one on page six through to item number fourteen on page nine. Number fourteen is in the addendum. And there are some revisions, so I'm moving for the revisions as well.
We need a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Mr. LaBrice?
Mr. Anderson.
Abstention.
Ms. Crawford.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Marte.
Just to everything except for six, A and I. A and I, I don't know the who or the why or how. And the six, it has the sport area. I'm gonna say not to anything related to sport.
So six, eight, nine are abstentions or no's?
Six, A and I opposed to those.
Ms. Melendez.
Yes, and I would like to thank the nine parents that are volunteering for the Spring Musical.
Ms. Odeyala.
Yes.
Vice President Gonzalez.
Yes.
President Peralta.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to Finance Committee. I'd like to move items number one on page ten through item number twenty-five on page fifteen. I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to Buildings and Grounds, Madam Vice President.
Madam President, I'd like to pass item number one on page sixteen.
I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, actually, I have one comment. Um, for item number one, Kathy's Kids Annual Code Drive, I just want to say thank you. Um, I know that it runs, I think, out of McGinnis. Um, but it says Barrack Street here. Um, they do this annually, and the amounts of codes and donations that they give out is incredible. Um, and so I just want to say thank you if you're listening. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to Old Business, I need a motion for the second reading of the following policies and regulations, thirty-two twelve attendance, teaching staff members policy. Forty-two twelve attendance, support staff members policy. Fifty-five eleven dress and grooming policy, fifty-five eleven dress and grooming regulations. Fifty-five eighteen school uniforms policy. Fifty-five eighteen school uniforms regulation. Twenty-three sixty-five acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence policy. Seventy-five twenty-three school district provided technology devices to pupils policy. I need a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to New Business, first reading of the following policies, fifty-four sixty high school graduation policy. Ninety-eighty school volunteers. Item number two, approval of the following revised job descriptions, supervisor of curriculum and instruction. Approval to return student ID number ending in fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-four to school as recommended by the Student Disciplinary Committee at the hearing conducted on November fourteenth of twenty twenty four. The approval to place student ID ending in eight, seven, zero in an alternative school upon receipt of satisfactory um clearance as requested by parent with the school to be determined by the child study team as recommended by the Student Disciplinary Committee at the hearing conducted on November fourteenth. Move it.
Second.
Who seconded? Second? Any discussion for New Business? I just wanted to say again, um, thank you so much. My time here has truly been a blessing, and I'm going to miss everyone, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
It wasn't.
Madam President?
Yes, I I'd like to say a few things, if you don't mind. Uh, first of all, I don't know if you can see me over here. Sorry now. So I was gone for thirteen months, and there's a few people out here that I want to say thank you to, starting with uh Ms. Ms. Peralta. I want to say thank you to you. The reality is, as humans, you know, we we tend to live the moment, right? Sometimes we you kind of wonder how do you love somebody today and then, you know, hate them tomorrow. We we live the moment. And I feel like if you're not there, people sometimes forget about you. Because again, they're not they're not used to seeing you. And I just want to say thank you to Stacy because the reality is you were constantly either texting me or calling me. And it was nothing to do with the board. It was just to check on me, all right? Mr. LaBrice, same thing. You texted me. I appreciate that. You know, there's a few things in the, there's a few people in the audience. Louis, you always been like a dad to me. Thank you for reaching out, you know? Day, same thing to you. Uh, Georgia, I know you are there. Birdie, same thing to you. I appreciate you guys constantly reaching re- reaching out to me just just to check on me. Uh, a few things that 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 happened today, the performing arts. We're going to continue not not just supporting you, but reality is in life, when something is working, you don't just, you know, try to make it work, but you try to make it better. So we could even, you know, anything that we could do to continue with the performing arts because it's working. We definitely have to, you know, continue working on that. You could see all the kids, how they're participating, they're liking it. We have to continue supporting programs like that. The other program that we have here, the peer meditation. As soon as they were, they showed that, the first thing that came to mind to me was Heroes and Cool Kids. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Heroes and Cool Kids. Growing up, I was in Heroes and Cool Kids from eighth grade all the way to my senior year in high school. For five years, I was in Heroes and Cool Kids. It's very similar to the to the peer program where you have, you know, kids basically talking to other kids and helping each other out. As a high school student, I used to go to the middle school and talk to those kids, you know? As a as a as a as a middle school student, eighth grader, you know, thanks to my wrestling coaches over there. My, uh, you know, I was able to go to fourth graders and talk to them. And today I'm in my thirties, and I just happen to be a mentor still. Everywhere I go, I happen to be a mentor. And when I look back at it, I do see how programs like that one impacted me. Not only to be a mentor, but also for public speaking. Okay, I was a kid that didn't speak no English at all, you know, kind of questioned myself a lot. And the fact that at thirteen years old, fourteen years old, I had a bunch of kids just looking forward to listen to me, to talking to me. That way they impacted me to be a better speaker and to be a better mentor. And and that's what programs like that one will do to kids. Sometimes we think about, okay, how can they, those kids help, you know, other kids to to develop, but at the same time, they develop themselves. They become leaders at a young age. They become mentors. You know, those are the kids actually are going to go out there and represent us in life. So always remember that. Um, I know I mentioned sports earlier. Here's the reality, when it comes to sport, we are very passionate about sport. This this board, administration, we're very pa- we're very passionate about sport. Okay? The reason I said not to certain things with sports, I'm gonna tell you straight up why. In the United States, in the military specifically, we always bottled two to one. What does that mean? That the United States, we are the, we have the greatest military in the in the whole coun- in the whole in the whole planet. The reason for that is because we don't send, or men or women, we don't send them to die. Okay, we always going to outbeat you two to one. And the reason I bring that up is because unfortunately, when it comes to sports in this community, not necessarily the high school, not necessarily middle school, but in this community of Perth Amboy, we are selling our, we're setting our kids up to fail. We're setting up our coaches to fail, straight up. I've been a coach since 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 high school. I, when I was sixteen years old, I was already working for the city. I was al- al- already in the in the basketball program. Okay, our football team was one and nine. I don't think we have ever had a had a ha- had a winning season. You know, I can't remember us having a winning season. Our soccer program was four and fourteen. Volleyball, last year volleyball, they were great, the girls. I don't know what happened this year. You know, but what I'm trying to say is, if we're going to do something, let's do it right. Or let's not do nothing at all and focus our energy somewhere else. Why are we, why are we keeping having all these programs that we're not winning? You know, we have to, I know, I know I brought it up to the to the administration and to the board, right? What is the purpose of us doing this? We have to have a purpose in everything, right? You don't just come to school just to come to school as a teacher. You come because you want to get paid, and at the same time, you probably love what you do. So why are we sending our kids and coaches to a baseball field, to a basketball court, to a ba- or or wrestling program? I grew up here. I used to wrestle. We used to be great. All of the sudden, we just keep on, and we just keep on doing it. So why are we going to keep doing this? Why are we keep putting programs just to have programs? We have budget costs, right? But yeah, we have programs just to have programs. We can't be doing that. If we're going to do something, we're going to do the right way, and we're going to do it to the best that we can do it. The performing arts, you see right there, right? We we're able to do this stuff. Okay, we could, we could do it, but we have to get together, not just with the high school, we have to get together with the community. Big shout out to the basketball coach for the boys' basketball. That, he, he, he has been putting in the work, and you're going to see it. He just needs support, and that's what I mean. We have to create a a a a a program that has support, that has that's all all the way around. But again, if we're going to do something, let's do it the right way, or let's go, or guess what, just don't do nothing at all.
Thank you.
Madam President, uh, I just would like to uh acknowledge two individuals, okay? One is our Director of Operations, Carmen Southward. Uh, she's retiring as of now, and I just want to wish her the very, very best in the future. Uh, be healthy, be strong, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you so much for for working with us and working for our school district. We applaud you. Second person I'd like to acknowledge tonight is Ms. Peralta. Um, Stacy ran with me oh years ago, and uh when I was elected to the board, I I I looked at her and I said, what are we getting ourselves into? And here she is, President, and she's leaving and going on to the council. Um, I I think we are all going to miss her a great deal, but I think she's going to leave her leadership behind so that we can follow in her footsteps, and I want to wish her the very, very best also. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you so much, Mr. George. All stop. Thank you. Madam Vice President?
I get to tell everybody the best news tonight. So in addition to our new business, I would also like to make a motion to revise the twenty-two thousand and twenty-five school calendar to... The whole revision is that half-day on April, December twenty-second will be...
Twenty-third?
December twenty-third. Sorry. On December twenty-third will be a day off.
Clap it up for that.
Instead of half-day. It is a Monday. It was a half-day, and it will be replaced for Election Day. We will have to work on Election Day in June, but I hope that's a good compromise. Enjoy your day. Oh, and then we have to vote on it, right?
One just addition to make sure there's clarity. In addition to that, we have four snow days. If we don't use one of the snow days, we probably go back to taking that Election Day and using it as a day off, but for right now, that'll be the change. This information will be on the website. Tomorrow, it'll go out on our app. It will also be emailed to staff, to parents of the community, and we will follow all contractual obligations as to how we're supposed to notify all entities. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Any further discussion? And so now vote. Roll call, Mr. LaBrice. Okay, so since we have no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And on the calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? I need a motion to adjourn our meeting. Move it. And just for clarification, the motion did pass to move our calendar. Okay. So the time is now ten twenty-three, and our meeting is adjourned. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.